Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting the Order of March the 14th Cabarrus County Board of Education Business Meeting. And first of all, we would like to observe a moment of silence for Leroy Lawson. He was, who passed away on March the 8th, 2016 at his home. Mr. Lawson joined Cabarrus County Schools in 2008 as a bus driver. Mr. Lawson drove a bus for Carl Afer Elementary School and Cox Mill Elementary School and Harris Road Middle School. So if we could have a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Now we have the Presentation of Color by AFROTTC Cadets from Mount Pleasant High School. So if we could stand, please, for the Presentation of Colors.
You may be seated.
And I would like to thank Lieutenant Colonel Malcolm Snell for his lovely singing for us, and also, I'd like to thank the cadets, Lieutenant Colonel Matthew Cavaness, and Lieutenant Alec Bennett, Captain Lucy Barnhart, and Sergeant Lieutenant, Staff Sergeant Anna Mutik. But we want to thank them so much for their participation. Also, we'd like to thank our SRO that's helping us with safety tonight, Daniel Lambert from Cox Mill Elementary. Thank you for being with us tonight. Also, we would like, at this time, to adopt our agenda. We have that before us. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Chairwoman?
Yes.
I'd like to amend the agenda to include just a brief discussion about Policy 2122. It was on the Report section last week, and then discussed again, and closed an open session as well last week, and I just wanted to maybe have a discussion about it because I think there was a report last week.
Okay, we have a motion to add this. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
For the audience, can you tell them what that's about?
Policy 2122 basically governs board member behavior. It's a self-governing policy that, where we decide what, I guess, we should and should not do. Is that accurate to say?
Well, what is, do you have a copy of that, or can you pull that up? Do you have the actual title of that?
The actual title is Role of Board Members in Interacting with the Public and Schools, Policy Code 2122.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have to have a second to...
If he wants to discuss it.
Are you second? Okay, we have a motion and second. Now we have the discussion.
But everything else on the agenda to approve it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All right, now, so we have to have a vote to put it onto the agenda, but is there any further discussion at this point?
I thought our last meeting, we voted to table this until the April 4th meeting because we knew our board chair wouldn't be here until then.
Well, now, this is just, what this is, he's wanting just to discuss this one, this policy, is what he's wanting to discuss.
Just, yeah, just the Policy 2122 is all.
Yeah, that's what he's discussing, just this policy. It's what he's asking for.
The last time it was discussed was in closed session, December 16th, and I wasn't able to be there, and so I just thought we, I appreciate the discussion.
That's what he's asking for at this point. Any further discussion? To my right, I'm asking, okay? To my left, any further discussion? We have a motion, we have a second. All right? All of those in favor of putting it on the agenda signify by saying aye. Aye. All right. All right, all of those opposed? So this is unanimous. So it's six. So all in favor of putting it on. So it is on the agenda. So that would put it to, I'm trying to see the last thing on there.
Looks like it's 10.8.
10. 10.8. 10.8. So that would move it to 10.8. All right. So with that added, do I have a motion to approve the agenda with that added?
So moved.
All right. So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. So we have a motion, have a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? Okay, that unanimously passes. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month with Dr. Louder and Tim Vaughn.
Good evening. Ms. Jones could not be here this evening. She's not feeling well, so I'm standing in for her to present our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month this evening. It's always a pleasure to present this award, and tonight, it's an extra special pleasure because we will honor our 50th Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month tonight. So we're very excited about that. Mr. Vaughn, we want to say thank you for providing us with this opportunity to recognize and celebrate outstanding teachers in our district. We appreciate your continued generosity, and we look forward to the next 50. Good. The Cabarrus County Schools Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for March is Christine Jansen. Mrs. Jansen, would you and your family and any members of your school's administrative team please come forward? Christine Jansen is a 5th grade teacher at WR Odell Elementary School. She was nominated for this month's award by one of her students, who very succinctly but poignantly wrote, "I think this teacher deserves an award because she has made me smarter, and I just want to tell her thank you." There's an anonymous quote that's been making the rounds on the internet that illuminates the impact that a teacher's confidence in a student can have, and it very simply states, "My teacher thought I was smarter than I was, so I was." Mrs. Jansen, on behalf of Cabarrus County Schools, thank you for helping students realize their potential and for inspiring them to believe in themselves and in their abilities. And we want to present you with your awards from Hillbush Ford. And then, we also have a special little award for you from the Communications Department that we wanted to present to you as well.
And Ronnie's going to stay with us for the Impact Through Education Awards, and so Ronnie, we're going to turn it back over to you for that.
Okay. Tonight, we're presenting Impact Through Education Awards to students and staff at Coltrane Webb Elementary School and at Mount Pleasant Middle School. We extend our continued thanks and appreciation to our friends at BB&amp;T for sponsoring these awards for us this school year. And now we'll go on with tonight's awards. First up is Coltrane Webb Elementary School, and it's my pleasure to invite any members of the Coltrane Webb Administrative Team to come forward at this time. Our first honoree from Coltrane Webb Elementary this evening is Keegan Klaus. Would Keegan and his family please come forward? Keegan is a 4th grader at Coltrane Webb Elementary STEM School. He is an enthusiastic learner who always seeks a new challenge. He is eager to learn and always perseveres through any task. He comes in ready and excited to learn each and every day. Keegan has a great sense of humor and is able to laugh at himself while learning new things. He loves figuring things out and is fascinated with Rubik's cubes. When choosing his project for the North Carolina Science and Engineering Fair, he went to Science Buddies and saw a similar biogas project. He tweaked it and added the heat component to his biogas project. He was hoping that he'd win with an earth-friendly project. He is a great friend and is kind to others. Keegan is definitely well-rounded as he excels in the classroom and on the soccer field. He is aware of those who need help and offers a helping hand. It may be offering someone to help find a website, or helping an emotional student calm down. He is a friend to all. Congratulations, Keegan. You are an Impact Through Education Award winner for Coltrane Webb Elementary STEM School. Our next Coltrane Webb honoree is Bargoff Vadapali. Would Bargoff and his family please come forward? Bargoff is a 5th grader at Coltrane Webb Elementary STEM School. He's an outstanding young man who is constantly seeking ways to improve his education, and in turn, raises the bar for his classmates. He participates in numerous clubs, including Battle of the Books, Robotics, Math Olympiad, and Science Olympiad. He also creates projects for the Science Fair and the Math Fair. In both fairs, Bargoff's projects advance to the regionals. His science project won two regional awards. He will be participating in three events at the Science Olympiad competition. He is a model 5th grader in behavior and work ethic. He is a team player and exhibits all the character traits of an outstanding student. Congratulations, Bargoff. You are an Impact Through Education Award winner for Coltrane Webb Elementary STEM School. Our next Coltrane Webb honoree is Ms. Erin Espinoza. Would Ms. Espinoza and her family please come forward? Erin Espinoza is an exceptional teacher. Her level of dedication to her students and Coltrane Webb STEM Elementary School is on display each day as she provides a rich and rigorous learning environment centered on high expectations and fun. Ms. Espinoza has a vibrant personality that uplifts everyone she comes into contact with. In a recent email from a parent, the parent highlighted how Ms. Espinoza went out of her way to support the family when the student had some educational concerns. She ended the email with the phrase, "Proud to be a Cougar kindergarten parent," and that's because of Ms. Espinoza's care and concern, not just for this particular student, but for all of her students. Congratulations, Ms. Espinoza. Thank you for making an impact through education at Coltrane Webb Elementary. And our final honoree from Coltrane Webb Elementary STEM School is Ms. Tammy Gray. Would Ms. Gray and her family please come forward? Tammy Gray is, well, Tammy. And if you have ever met her, you know exactly what that means. She has been dedicated to keeping Coltrane Webb safe and well-maintained for nearly a decade. You can always find Tammy with a smile on her face. She goes above and beyond daily in a number of ways. She arrives at the school often before the sun is up and prepares each day to ensure the school is in tip-top shape. Tammy doesn't know this, but administration has received a number of positive messages from the staff highlighting her amazing work ethic and dedication to the school. One particular note mentioned that she not only does an amazing job keeping the school clean, but her lasting legacy will remain in the relationships she is able to build, and in particular, the amount of care and loving support she provides the children at the school. So thank you, Tammy, and you are appreciated more than you will ever know. Congratulations, Ms. Gray. Now we will move on to our Impact Through Education Award honorees for Mount Pleasant Middle School, and I'd like to invite any members of the Mount Pleasant Middle School Administrative Team to come forward at this time. Our first honoree from Coltrane, I'm sorry, from Mount Pleasant Middle School is Ryan DeVito. Would Ryan and his family please come forward? Ryan DeVito is an 8th grader at Mount Pleasant Middle School. He is a fine young man who is self-assured, self-reliant, but more importantly, selfless. He always has a smile and kind greeting for everyone who sees him. He is a member of the Fellowship of Christian Athletes Youth Commission International Club and serves as a group leader. His kind and caring disposition, intelligence, positive attitude, and Christian faith are attributes Ryan possesses that have molded him into a well-rounded student and a pleasure to teach. Congratulations, Ryan. You are an Impact Through Education Award winner for Mount Pleasant Middle School. Our next honoree from Mount Pleasant Middle School is London Little. Would London and her family please come forward? London Little is an 8th grader at Mount Pleasant Middle School. She is a wonderfully well-rounded, open-minded, and hard-working student. She is able to partner with many different types of students in group settings and brings out the best in her partners. She leads by example in a quiet, nurturing, and inspiring way. She is quick with a laugh and a smile that brightens the day of everyone around her. London always seems to have that smile on her face. She has a positive attitude and always gives 100%. She works hard to meet challenges, she's concerned for the well-being of her peers, and is an advocate for them. She's very respectful to adults and always willing to assist. London is also involved in many extracurricular activities. Simply put, she is a real pleasure to have in the classroom and at the school. Congratulations, London. You are an Impact Through Education Award winner for Mount Pleasant Middle School. Our next Mount Pleasant Middle honoree is Mr. Keith Lee. Would Mr. Lee and his family please come forward? Keith Lee is the band director at Mount Pleasant Middle School and the assistant band director at Mount Pleasant High School. He works diligently to make sure all of his students are successful in the band program. He is a leader in the band community and sets a tone of excellence in the band program. I'm sorry. He's a leader in the band community and sets a tone of excellence with his students as they prepare for contests and concerts. Keith is resourceful and always seeks methods to improve the band program at Mount Pleasant Middle each year. One of his colleagues commented, "Mr. Lee is one of the best music teachers I've seen. He has the ability to get the best out of his students while producing a unified sound that consistently gets superior ratings at band competitions. In addition, I have witnessed him going the extra mile to help students outside the classroom. Mr. Lee has the true heart of a teacher and is a valuable member of the Mount Pleasant Middle family." I also want to make a special point that Mr. Lee is here with special permission from the Army because he was actually serving in a special training at Fort Bragg, and he got special permission to come back tonight to receive his award, and then he's heading right back out tonight, back to Fort Bragg. So we congratulate you, Mr. Lee, and we thank you for all that you do at Mount Pleasant Middle School. And our final honoree this evening from Mount Pleasant Middle School is Ms. Tanya Taylor. Would Ms. Taylor and her family please come forward? Oh, now I see the connection. I thought you were here just for the board meeting. Anyway, never mind. Okay. Instead of reading just scripted biography about Ms. Taylor, I wanted to share with you some of the comments that her friends and colleagues have shared with the school about her. "One of the hardest-working, nicest ladies that I have had the pleasure to work with is Tanya Taylor. She lights up a room when she walks in. She is a joy to be around and is always positive and upbeat. Tanya always finds the good in every situation. She takes pride in everything that she does. She works so hard to make sure that Mount Pleasant Middle School is a great place to be." Those are just a few of the comments that Tanya Taylor's colleagues have made about her. "She's always willing to help, even if it's not in her job description. When you ask her for help, she's right there." When you ask her for help, she's right there, no questions asked. Her creativity and love of making things look cheerful is an added bonus for the school. She loves and takes care of the school, its students, and staff. Mrs. Taylor is the consummate professional. She has the heart of a servant inside the school community that is so needed. The words 'that's not my job' never come out of her mouth. The students, staff, and administration all recognize and appreciate what she does every day at Mount Pleasant Middle School. Her positive attitude is infectious and helps make the school a better place. The Mount Pleasant Middle School family is blessed to have Mrs. Taylor." Congratulations, Mrs. Taylor, and thank you for making an impact at Mount Pleasant Middle School.
Okay, we have before us, the next item is 6.1, and this is the approval of the minutes. And these are the minutes from February the 1st, the work session. We have February the 8th, the business meeting, and then February the 17th, the strategic planning meeting. Do we have a motion to approve these minutes? Okay, this was a motion by Jeff Phillips and seconded by, who was? Mr. Harrison, okay. All right, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed? All right, that unanimously passes. All right, next item is 7.1. This is comments by the vice chair. I'll make it short and sweet. First of all, I would like to congratulate our Robinson Bulldogs basketball team for their state championship, yes, that they won Saturday. That was wonderful, and then that victory. I heard that it was a very, very tense game. Great. Next, I would like to say, "Proctors, we need you. End of the grade testing is just around the corner, and we need as many proctors as possible." I know all the schools are in need of proctors. I know Concord Middle has put out a request. They need proctors from 8:15 until 1:00. It may, you know, you may get out earlier. I know they have requested Wednesday, May the 25th, Thursday, the 26th, Wednesday, June the 1st, Thursday, June the 2nd, and Friday, June the 3rd. You don't have to do all the days, whatever days you can give, they would appreciate. You can contact Ann Wagner, their test coordinator, at 704-652-4460. Again, that number is, she really, she really, really needs help. Does this sound like a commercial? But not just this school, seriously. Any school really can use proctors, and we do need them for this testing period. Again, I sound like a commercial, don't I? But our schools do need those proctors very, need them very much, and your help would be appreciated. That's all I have. So, Dr. Lauter, 7.2, comments from our superintendent.
Good evening. I also want to reiterate what Ms. Carpenter said. Congratulations to the J.M. Robinson basketball team on the state 3A championship. It was a great game, came down to the wire. I also want to congratulate J.M. Robinson for another state championship they won this weekend, which was a three-peat of the Vex Robotics State Championship that Robinson won again this weekend. It was also Saturday, so they got two state championships on Saturday, which is pretty impressive. This week, we will welcome members of the class of 2029 as we conduct kindergarten registration for 2016-2017. Parents with children eligible to start kindergarten in August should visit the district website at www.kaberris.k12.nc.us for additional information. We also are conducting preschool registration through March the 23rd. Information about eligibility and registration for preschool is also available on the district website. I want to remind parents that tomorrow, March 15th, is a planning staff development day. It will be closed for students, as we also have people voting in our schools tomorrow. The new Odell Elementary School is featured on Kabarras this week on the county government channel 22. The segment includes footage of the construction progress, as well as an interview with Principal Sandy Ward. You can watch the program on TV or online from the Kabarras County Government website at www.kabarrascounty.us. In March, we have two big observances. One is Youth Art Month. Our annual celebration includes an exhibit of student artwork at the Kabarras Art Guild, which is at 11 Union Street in downtown Concord. Please stop in and take a look at all the work from our talented students K-12. This is also School Social Work Month, where school social workers are actively involved in each of our schools and serve as a vital link between home, school, and community. Social workers make a difference in the lives of Kabarras County families by helping to build, support, and empower positive family and community relationships. So, thank you to our school's social workers for making such a positive impact, for doing so many things behind the scenes to support our kids and make our schools a better place to be. Looking ahead, we will dismiss students early from school on Thursday, March 24th, that's a week from Thursday, in advance of spring break, which begins on Friday, March 25th. We want to wish everyone a safe and happy break. We look forward to welcoming everyone back on April 4th, refreshed and ready to finish the year strong. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Lauter. Okay, the next item is our guest speakers. In accordance with Policy 2310, as revised by the Board on May the 11th, 2015, as part of each business meeting, we will set aside for citizens to address the Board. Sign-up cards will be available for any individual or group to indicate their desires to address the Board. Speakers must hand a completed card to the Board clerk no later than 6:00 p.m., the normal set time of the regular scheduled monthly meeting. The Board or vice chair will decide the time devoted to public comment. Speakers must complete an information card, including their name, group name, address, phone number, and list the general education topic of their presentation for the Board minutes. At this time, we have three cards, and I will announce a name. The first individual is Scott Noel, if he will come forward at this time, and they do have three minutes.
There we go. Sorry about that. I know how these operate. My name is Scott Noel. Hopefully, he receives some emails on the topic of Royal Oaks Elementary Solar Array that is part of the construction proposal. This is my assistant in sustainability, or partner, I should say more often than not. She normally speaks, but since I only have three minutes, we'll keep it brief here tonight. Some of the stuff I sent, I just wanted to follow up with, and it was all in the email for the most part. I've spoken with you, a couple of you over the last couple of days as well. To bring that a little bit more full circle and talk about some of those elements and what is consideration, something with this, again, I'm here personally, but it would be something that Dr. Phillips can attest to, I think potentially is right in the wheelhouse for the Mount Pleasant Academy of Energy and Sustainability, which I'm also a board member of. And the, and I do understand this is definitely an investment worth deliberation across the board on this. It's not something to be entered in lightly, because it often takes a little bit more knowledge to understand what a solar array is, and what the payback is, and how it operates, and what it is just beyond looking at it myoplically of that source of energy on that one school. So, in my profession, I am in digital marketing, as I mentioned. This is something around sustainability that my family and I are very passionate about, because it makes logical sense to me. And everything that I've looked at for the many, many years that I've done it, there are dollars and cents in it, as well as environmental, social, and economic benefits that really wrap together in that triple bottom line. On the point of the Mount Pleasant Academy of Energy and Sustainability, it's a new NAF program this year in Kabarras County, which obviously you are all familiar with overall. This is something, as I mentioned, that just fits very well with that school, and that is this energy and sustainability piece of this. And unfortunately, the Mount Pleasant Middle School kids left, I would have loved to talk to them afterwards as well. We're trying to recruit all the time. But that piece is, if I may reiterate, the fifth element of our vision and our goals, which Dr. Phillips was a part of recently, that was added to the Board. We created these in February. And that one piece is establish Mount Pleasant High School as an exemplary model of energy, efficiency, measures, and sustainability for Kabarras County schools to emulate and implement these practices across the district. So, that's a key piece of this, is you have a lot of teachers and staff that will be trained in this, the students will be informed and able to help out with this school, and then take it more broadly. As I mentioned, Kabarras County, I know they are interested in economic development of bringing in more green companies into the area as well. And I have talked to some Board of Commissioners about this in the past, so there's an interest in this overall. Where that goes, obviously, we'll be seeing how that may be determined. Some of the things I talked about, solar technology status, it is definitely something that is, now it's here, it's not going to change that much in the next five to 10 years. And I could talk about that further offline if it is needed, but the monocrystalline silicone panels are really where it's at right now, and they will be for the foreseeable future. The direct and supplemental savings, as I mentioned, the supplemental piece is that other thing where you can get just beyond that one piece, and you can build upon that and really make behavioral changes in that school, and then other schools can learn from that and adopt it as well. County funds, will this set a precedent? I don't think you have to be locked into this, potentially, of always funding and asking for the county to this, to do this. I know they've looked at some funding from other ways. There is a sweet spot in there, and I work with other companies to try and do that. I'll wrap up very quickly, I promise. A sweet spot in there to try and get some additional funding and investors, other companies and others. I know there are some people in Concord, actually, that are potentially interested in doing this. It's a matter of putting those right people together and pulling those levers. Kannapolis schools are doing it as well, from what I understand, as far as the solar proposal, and probably taking that to the Board of Commissioners also. So, if there are any questions now, or if it is appropriate at the time of the action agenda, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you for your time.
Okay, our next speaker will be Wilma King Means.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I've been asked by members of my community to share some ongoing issues they have with the school system, and I'll just list a few, because they have quite a few, but I just picked out a couple that were highlighted and voiced by more than one person. Negative comments made to student about achievement with racial overtones during an assembly. Students with 504 plans in lower or middle grades being denied in high school. Students with IEPs and parents not being invited to conferences. Pregnant students not being offered 504 or OHI services. Grandparents and others called to pick up children from school, and when they asked why, the school said they cannot share the information, even though they are listed as emergency contacts. Some parents were concerned, they had meetings with a principal, and they felt like they were talked to as if they were children. They said they understood about personnel issues, and they weren't getting into that. They also had some concerns about minority hiring. Now, we understand that these cannot be addressed tonight. We are organizing a community group, People Organized for Education, today, a community PTO, similar to one we had about 20 years ago in the Logan community, and we're branching out in all the communities. We'll be meeting at fire departments and other places, churches, and we'll be inviting administrators, board members, and others to our meeting in the future. I hope that some of you can come. I hope that some of these concerns will be looked into prior to the meeting. It will be in April. Some of the board members are here tonight, others will be, you know, to support the concerns. These are legitimate concerns of parents, of students, grandparents of students. I'm not either, but I seem to end up with a lot of the information, a lot of the questions, and I try to help wherever I'm needed. Excuse me. I'd also like to thank you for the CIAA High School Day. That is an event that's close to my heart, that was started by C.C. Griffin back in the 60s. It was a great success. Many of the schools in Kabarras County participated. I've gotten feedback from the chairperson of the CIAA High School Day, and they commended J. Ann Robinson, so they get another little tweet today. And I'm looking forward for when they come and get their rings and shake their hands with all of you. But that was, CIAA is really close to my heart. About 12 kids that I know personally were accepted into college and got scholarships at the site. And the last thing, this is the form that I am encouraging parents to fill out. It is parent consent for information exchange, because I've explained that with the FERPA rights, you have to have something from a parent, and I've asked them to, if they can, to get it notarized. Now, on here, it doesn't have a place for the notarization, and it's only going to be, I suggested, for a year. But I think this is a document that you all have made up, so this will be the one we use. Thank you.
Thank you. The next individual is Joe Blackwood.
Evening. How are y'all doing?
Good evening.
My name's Joe Blackwood. Like you said, I'm a elementary teacher at Cox Mill Elementary School, and I come to you tonight on behalf of our community and a former student of mine who I had in kindergarten, and that was then lucky enough to be able to stay in contact with and watch grow and mature and things, and then was lucky enough to again have him this year in fifth grade, and his name was Elijah Ashburner. And as you're all aware, he passed away in November from his battle with ethelioid sarcoma. And we come to you today, just at the foundation that they've created in his honor, the Prayers for Elijah Foundation, has created a sign that I believe you all have pictures of, kind of what it looks like and what it entails on the sign, that would be affixed to one of the upper ends at the center shelter at the Cox Mill baseball fields. I think you also have a picture of where the sign would go in that triangle area at the top there. This would be a metal sign. We have a kind of a replica tonight, if you wanted to see it, but it's not the exact metal version, obviously. This sign would be a permanent reminder of Elijah's love for Odell, the rec leagues that he participated in for so many years, and would be a reminder for all of those who come to the fields each and every day, that like Elijah said, "Faith and believing are your cure." Elijah was no different than most other boys or girls his age. He loved playing sports. It was a time where he could dream of being like his favorite athletes, and he could show how his hard work and practice had paid off. He began playing T-ball at five years old, just as he started kindergarten at Cox Mill. I remember going to watch his games and watching him progress from year to year and get better each year. He loved being at those baseball fields or at the basketball courts, whether it was him playing, or whether he was cheering on his brother Sam, or many of his friends and other teammates. Elijah, the fields there and the courts that Odell Rec provides were like a home to Elijah. He was definitely not a stranger to any of the members of the Odell family. Any and everyone who was participated and been at the fields, from players to coaches to the refs or umpires, knew of Elijah and who he was. The Odell Rec League was one of the first groups to step up and to stand beside Elijah's family. Once he was diagnosed with the ethelioid sarcoma in May of 2014, they organized different kinds of drives and collected items to help Elijah stay physically and mentally strong since he was unable to continue playing sports. Odell's been there every step of the way for Elijah and his family, and they still continue to this day to walk beside them and help, help them, and just have a couple. Like most kids who play sports, you know, you always have your items that you cherish the most, and some of these are some things that Elijah was most proud of in his days at Odell. His first was his homerun ball, his first homerun ball in April of 2013 that his coaches presented him with, you know, after the game, the next game, and he was, you know, obviously excited beyond belief and over the moon, and the first thing he wanted to do was get a case to put it in to preserve and keep that special accomplishment and that memory. One of his other most cherished items was a bat that his team that he played with the year that he was diagnosed with the sarcoma and was forced to quit playing. His team decided to, all of the members signed a bat and presented it to Elijah, and then the first thing, obviously, he wanted to do was be able to find someplace safe to keep that. So, he got a case to put the bat in, as you could see, so he could hang it on his wall where it's still hanging to this day, so he could, you know, keep those memories and be able to remember those things, and they would never fade from his mind. So, it's pretty much, you know, what we're here, why we're here. What I'm asking is, obviously, that you consider the dedication of the shelter there at the Odell parking, or the Cox Mill Fields in honor of Elijah and his memory, and carrying on his legacy for his foundation and for all the other people's children, and likewise he'll help. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You also have a golf tournament, you also have a golf tournament coming up?
Yes, we also have a golf tournament coming up.
Tell the public about that.
It's open to the public. You can find it on his, a lot of it's out on Facebook, in Prayers for Elijah Foundation. the Prayers for Elijah Foundation. And it's May 22. There's also May 7 coming up, a Warrior Workout at the, I don't know, that location where Pitta is and all that is in that area. They're doing an outdoor workout location where they'll have drawings and things like that of that nature as well. So those are just some of the upcoming things that the foundation has planned, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, that's all of the cards I have for the guest speakers, so we will close this portion of the guest speakers. Our next item on the agenda is 9.1, which is the approval of the consent agenda. Do we have a motion for that? Motion by Mr. Phillips, who was the, that was Mr. Harrison again. Okay, motion is second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, that unanimously passes. All right, the next item is, let's see, that was, that was 9.1. All right, all right, let's see what we have here. I don't think we've got 9.1. Then we are going to 10, and we have 10.1, which is the approval of the installation of Prayer for Elijah Foundation signage at Cox Mill Elementary School Baseball Shelter. And we have Tim Lauter up. Okay, Tim, go for it.
I'm just not sure I can add anything.
You can't?
But I will add that we, as a facilities, do recommend this, so we hope that you would consider it and vote for it.
Okay, does anyone have any questions? Look to the left here.
You know the date, you know the date that it's going to be installed?
Actually, two weeks dedication?
Yes.
Two weeks dedication.
Okay, two weeks. Okay, any other questions on this side? Okay, how about to my right? Do you have any questions?
Move to approve.
Okay, I have a motion to approve, motion, motion second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? Okay. All right, all right. So we've got that approved. That was unanimous. All right, 10.2, this is, we have a time-sensitive capital outlay funding request, and we have Mrs. Klutz here. Okay?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. As Ms. Carpenter said, there, we've submitted some budget requests to you through the normal process of our budgeting meetings. I believe we went over some of the capital items last Monday. Two of the items that are in that request, one would be our mobile units that we need, and also our buses, our yellow school buses are in those requests. Those items are a bit time-sensitive, and because we've talked to some vendors, we can get some really good turnaround times and some, it would really have an advantage to our students and teachers and our staff if we could go ahead and move on those. So we're coming to you, asking you to approve a request for funds, capital outlay for these specific projects in advance of the budget process. We believe that the county will receive that request in the same intent that it submitted in good favor. And they, assuming this board approves the request to move forward, they will see and review the request on March the 21st, but they have not discussed it as a full commission prior to today.
And the other thing, we're kind of saying, we see this as priority, that we see these two things as top priority. Is that not correct?
Yes, ma'am, they are.
And, but that's what we're saying, yes, we see these as top priority. And two, we're noticing that we're saying 10 buses, because originally in the buses, we were saying we wanted 20. Is that correct? And we're saying 10, this is what we're getting, right?
So we've had it, we, our budget request is for 20. We've had some preliminary discussions. We've worked well with the management, the administration here and the administration there, have worked well together, and I think that's the goal of this board, and the commission is for us to work together. So we came to a number of 10 at this point. Certainly, we need 20, and we're hoping for more later, but at this point, we're just asking that the board approve the request for the 10.
And I think we can be very thankful to our commissioners, that the county has worked very, very well with us, and we are very thankful for all the cooperation we have got with the staff and with them, with the help they've given us. So do we have a motion to go ahead and approve this and tell them to send it on over to the county? Okay, Mr. Fur has made us a motion. Who has second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Phillips has seconded it. All right, any further discussion?
So that's going to add 500 seats, 500 bus seats? Is that what we get from 10 buses? Or is it more than that? So there's 64-seat capacity, and we expect that much growth at least next year.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? Okay, that unanimously passes. Okay, we have 10.3, which is approval to acquire easement on Highway 73 related to work at WR Odell Elementary. Mr. Lauter, you're back.
Yes, ma'am. As you know, we've been negotiating with Rocket River Crossing LLC, which has the property adjacent to WR Odell Elementary School, and we have come to an agreement for the easement, permanent easement across 1.03 acres, and then the temporary easement of .62 acres. We were going to be have settled on a price of $1 in compensation for doing so, because at that point in time, the developer obviously will benefit from the improvements that we put in, will be able to use it for his future development. So we recommend approval.
Okay. All right, to my right, any questions?
I think the only thing that's, the only thing that's different is that you've added the...
The only thing that's different is you've added the map to this from what we saw last week.
Yes, sir.
There's no change in the actual agreement.
Right, and if you notice, D and E are exactly the same, but they're referenced in different places, so they are the same.
Okay, yeah, all right. Thank you.
Okay, to my left, any questions? Okay, do we have them? Okay, do we have a motion? Okay, Mr. Fur gives me a motion. Mr. Walters gives me a second. Y'all, you guys look alike. Just kidding.
We resemble our accusations.
Just kidding, just kidding. I wear my glasses, got to get my glasses, just playing with you guys. No, so got a motion, got a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, we unanimously pass. Okay, we got number 10.4, approval of construction contracts awarded for replacement Mount Pleasant Middle School. Mr. Lauter, you're back.
Yes, ma'am. As we discussed in our work session, we are ready to recommend award for the construction contract for Mount Pleasant Middle School replacement, and it goes to Lightner Construction, who was our low base bid, and they recommend award to contract amount of $28,783,000.
Okay, all right. To my left, any questions?
And is that, that's below the budget amount?
Yes, sir, about $4 million below what was anticipated.
Outstanding.
Okay, any other questions on this side? All right, to my right, how about this side? Okay, only question I have, have we worked with this end of this group before?
Not that I'm aware of, but they have built quite a few schools in North Carolina.
In North Carolina? Where are they from?
I am not sure, ma'am. You asked me a question, I didn't know.
Oh.
Oh, no. I can tell you in a second.
Okay. I'm just curious how far they are from...
Yes, Rock Hill, South Carolina. There you go.
Right, they're from South Carolina then. They're not, they're not local.
They're local. They're pretty local. Rock Hill's pretty local when it comes to large contractors.
They're not too far. We, they're not too far from home. We can go get them.
We can take a guess.
Okay, all right, all right, all right. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Rob, all right, Rob, Mr. Walters' motion, and Mr. Phillips' second. All those in favor, no further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, unanimously passes. All right, number, all right, we have number 10.5, approval of construction contract award for replacement Royal Oaks Elementary. All right, Mr. Lauter?
As you're aware, we did award a portion of this contract early for site work, but there is a remaining portion of the contract that we knock to award now, once we have the funding. We recommend award to Edison Ford Construction Company, and as we talked about last week, you know, we had a recommendation that included the $530,000 for the solar array. There was some concern over that. So we do have a recommendation approval of the contract in total of $16,889,600 without the solar array. Or should you have further discussion and decide to do the solar array, the amount would be $17,419,600. At this point, I would like to add that, you know, we did recommend that this, the solar arrays do go in. Kannapolis did recommend that as well, and has moved, passed that on to the county commission as a second item to be funded by, should the county elect to do so. So you have the priority of awarding at the, you know, the 16,889,600, and then afforded also that very same request to Cabarrus County, should you elect to do so.
Okay, all right. Thank, to my right here, any questions?
It's not really a question, it's an observation. Yeah, based on our discussion last week, you know, I would say, well, I thought it would be better to spend that $500,000 on some of the other high priority needs that were listed. And you said, well, you know, that comes from a different part of the budget. And then Mr. Schumaker, who's not here, said something that stuck with me for the rest of the week, which was, well, the difference between the photovoltaics panels and some of those other, you know, improvements, was that this one actually generates revenue. So it's like, hmm, okay, so let's think about this. So I asked the administration what interest rate we expect to get for the bonds, and based on what was just negotiated, I guess, it looks like it's about 2.8%. So I put that into a loan calculator for 20-year loan, payback with 2.8%, if we had to borrow $530,000. The annual payment is just under $35,000 a year, which unfortunately is more, I was hoping it would be less, than the anticipated savings of the electricity. Unfortunately, it's more. If we could somehow get that cost down by 20%, then we could tell the county this will break even. You don't even have to dip into your coffers to make this happen. So I guess, I'm looking at the audience, at Mr. Noel, who came and spoke, just to say, if there was some way that we could find community members who could come up with that 20%, then perhaps there's a way that we could show the county that this really won't cost any, the taxpayers any money. But as it stands right now, I'm reluctant to make a recommendation, while I know that we're asking for it an awful lot from our county.
I will add one comment here. The good news is, the panels last far beyond 20 years. Actually, we have a 25-year warranty on the panels and a 40-year useful life, so it will generate that revenue for 40 years after, you know, more, twice as long as the actual loan amount. So we will more than make back all the money we spend, plus quite a bit more. And if we have escalation in power, that price could go up, you know, as high as $30, $35,000 per year, based on escalation just over the next 20 years, you know, 2.5% to 3%, which is what energy is normally rising. So if that energy price goes up, of course, we'll save more money, but that's the way it works.
Okay, to my left, questions?
David may have some conversation about it, but I was just wanting to make a recommendation to approve the proposal that the staff has put before us with the panels.
Well, now, which is the...
With the panels, with the solar panels.
As an option.
But the amount that you're actually saying, you're going to send them 16,889,600 plus the option, or you giving them the whole total?
Well, if you prove it with the option, then the total we'll send to them is $17,419,600.
You're $17 million, then?
Yes.
Okay.
So, does Cabarrus County schools have any track record with solar arrays, with solar energy? Do we have any prior history whatsoever of going down this path of solar arrays in our construction projects prior to, prior to now?
I think our lawyer wants to say something.
Sorry.
Dr. Harrison, I just, I think that was, I think that was a motion, so it's probably appropriate to call.
Okay, was that a motion?
You can then have the discussion.
All right, all right. Well, you're making a motion. All right, Tim makes a motion, so the total that you're sending then is 17, 17 million?
419,600.
419,600. So that's the total you're saying, send them, because that's not what's actually on the, excuse me, I'm too close to the mic. That's not the actual total they have on the, because they were showing 16 something. They were saying, kind of break it out. So you're saying, send them 17,419,600. All right, so that's a motion. Do I have a second for that motion? It died. All right, it died. Do we have a motion? Do we have another motion?
I'll make a motion that we board approve the construction contract to Edison Ford, Inc. in the amount of $60,889,600 pending sufficient funding to be received
Okay.
From the county, to include recommended bid alternates as presented.
Okay, so you're saying just...
Oh, and to offer the option to the county for the solar panel array at 500, at an additional $530,000.
If they want to see it. In other words, show it to them.
Give them that option. They may, they may say, you know what, that is a good deal, and take it. Yeah, okay, so it's...
Yeah, but you were adding it in.
You were saying the full thing, so I've given them the option. Okay. Wordsmith, okay.
Just show it to them, say, here it is.
Is that a second?
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second for that? You're sitting there, you got to tell me that. You can't just show me the head. All right, don't show me the head, just say, say, say it, say it. All right, second. Isn't that right, Mr. Attorney?
I think a verbal motion is appropriate.
Well, I know.
This is kind of, I like this kind of auction house format. You are here, second, going once, going twice. Hey, you're moving it along, Madam.
Second by Mr., second by Mr. Harrison. All right, now, just further discussion. Further discussion? I want to make sure what we're, I want clarification here, and I think our board probably wants clarification. We are sending to the commissioners the 16,800, that amount, 16,889,600, and then we're kind of putting off the side, if they want to show them, we're just going to show them that, that if, you know, to show them the amount of 530,000, if they wanted to add that, the panels, that that's what it would cost, but we're not adding that into the amount.
Ma'am, I will add too here that, obviously, with the motion you have, you're asking to award for the base contract, as we've recommended for 16, and also asking the county to consider funding the 530. I hope that's...
Consider.
Okay, and that being the case, obviously, the contractor has agreed to hold that price. We're running out of time on holding the prices, because we bid it, you know, almost four months ago. They've agreed to hold that price for 60 more days, so depending on what the county decides to do with their budget session, which they will do, I guess, at our next meeting, which is next week, if they decide to fund both this and Kannapolis' solar array, then they, we would have to come back to you and say, you know, obviously, we've let you continue to recommend to do a change order to that contract to make the total contract 530 million dollars, $530,000 more, excuse me. Okay?
Okay.
Would you please restate your question, because I suppose...
I will attempt to, yes, sir. Have we got any prior history of consideration or working with solar arrays in prior construction projects?
The only previous construction project that we tried to use solar arrays in was the Odell project, and that was going to be an outside source of coming in, a group coming in and actually putting them on as a lease situation. However, our project was not large enough to accommodate the amount of money they would like to invest in one single project, so we didn't really get a whole lot of options. We did have, we had a couple people respond, but then once they responded, they could not pull together the capital group to fund that, so it died of that funding.
And I have a follow-up question whenever you're ready. And I have a follow-up question, whenever you're ready.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Kelly. Kelly, just reminded me that if, should the Board of Commissioners decide to fund the 530,000, then you do have a meeting on the 23rd, which is two days after that, if you wish to, you know, go back and do that, so we can go ahead and move the contracts and sign them all at the same time. But, but no, to tell you, this is our first rodeo on having solar panels on the school. Obviously, you know, you have some policies, trying to do as much efficiency as we possibly can, and this is one way to be more efficient. Like I said, it does have a long-term payback, but with the life of the panels, and as you just stated earlier, Ms. Noel talked about how the efficiency on the panels probably will not improve over the next five to 10 years, because as good as it's going to be, when new technology comes out, it may be in place by then. But if we wait till then, we've lost 10 years' worth of revenue we could generate by the fact that it was...
And you've made several references to Conaplis' construction projects. How is the solar array in this school for Cabarrus County Schools associated, if at all, with the Conaplis projects?
They were both designed by the same architect and bid almost at the same time. They're going to be awarding this in the same bond package that we were for Conaplis School as well. And their board has moved to award the contract with the solar panels as their option. So they're both being presented to the county, they would both be, should you pass this, at the county at both times, to fund both, for both schools.
Okay.
It's their first time as well, though.
Okay. Any further discussion on this side? Does that, any further questions? If not, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Okay. Unanimous passes. Okay. Then we have got, all right, that was, all right, and we've got 10.6. Approval of lease for property at the Bethel Elementary for creation of a community garden. All right, Mr. Ladder?
Yes, as we talked about this last month, the, we have changed the agreement just a little bit, I think you see it in your presentation, where we added a couple amendments to that agreement, which allowed us to include language about having it as an educational program for the elementary school and encouraging them to, obviously, find opportunities to work with the school for educational purposes for the community garden. But at this point in time, with those changes, the blue line changes, I would recommend change, approval of that version for approval.
Okay. Questions on this side?
How many other agreements like this do we have? How many other agreements do we have, a dollar a year leases for entities?
I'm not, I'm trying to think of any, I'm not aware of any other community gardens. I do think, I think there've been a few times where we've worked out essentially dollar a year leases, and I'm trying to, I'm looking for, Kelly's helping remembering those.
You mind if I hand Odell, but that's...
Okay. Yeah. So we had had one in the past, and we don't have anymore.
What about Weddington Hill? I mean, I know we've got some kind of walk-in trail and stuff over there, but do we do any land or anything over there?
The campus calls any kind of agreement on that?
The only other agreements I can think of probably would be with the Park and Recreation Department. That's pretty much a, at least we have the community parks on school property, and that's just, the dollar was a ceremonial situation for them to build.
The other dollar here we talked a lot about was the conservation easement, remember with the water? We weren't getting any money for that. They were improving it, we were giving them that watershed. That was not any revenue generation for us.
Yeah, the easement over at, over at Hairsburg.
Easement for them to do the wetlands reclaimation.
Yeah, over at...
He said that there was also thousands of dollars that they had done on our behalf as well at other places.
Well, they were doing work, that's right. What we were getting out of that was some work to do that, you know, to refurbish the water stream. We were giving that so it can be dedicated as a wetland. So it's not revenue generating, is that what's your question?
Just the concern, the concern is, do we set a precedence by doing this? The other groups are going to come to us and say, hey, you did it there, we have a need, you have a property.
All right. Do you have a question?
No, ma'am.
All right. Wait a minute. Let me go on this side. Anybody got a question? All right. Motion? Wait a minute. Mr. Harrison has a question.
I guess. Go ahead.
Okay.
Is the church agreeable to working with the school for educational opportunities?
Yes, sir. That was intended, as long as you just made it specific in the...
Okay. So that's been made explicit with the church?
Yes, sir.
Gotcha. Thank you.
All right. Are you ready? I think he's ready for a motion.
Let's make a motion to approve as presented.
All right. Mr. Furman made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Harrison, I'm having, I'm having, I'm having a really trouble with, Mr. Harrison made a second. Any further discussion?
So do we answer the question? Are we setting a precedent here?
Well, I mean, I think it may, it may encourage other folks to come forward with community garden ideas. You're not going to be bound to enter an agreement with others, but it may encourage other people to come forward with this kind of arrangement.
I hope so.
And if it does, that...
But you wouldn't, you wouldn't be legally required to say, oh, we did it here. Every school has to create a community garden. I mean, you would have to approve each one, because it's a real estate agreement.
Okay.
And one of the things, you got to start somewhere. This, like I say, may open the doors for other opportunities. All right. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Okay. Unanimous passes. All right. 10.7. Approval of change order for Rose Office Systems to complete work on new, new early college. Tim?
As you're aware, we came to you several months ago to purchase the units that we were going to use at the early college. And in doing so, at that point in time, once the design was complete and we had finalized the site plan for those, we would come back to you then with the installation costs associated with this. This change order goes into place where they were going to modify in the units to meet our exact needs by adding another game bathroom and a few other things to the building itself, and then, obviously, moving it into place and setting it up for us. So this change order allows for that setup of those two facilities for the early college.
All right. Questions?
All right. I'm just referring back to, I guess, our September meeting, when there was a budget proposed for putting this in, and I think it was 574,000 total. How does this compare to, when you put it in the, what we approved earlier for the building, plus now the installation, how does that compare? Are we still within that original proposed budget?
This change order, yes. It's in that original, pulls us within that original budget. We do have some grading that we're having to try to work around because of the site conditions we encountered there. And we're working right now with the county to talk about the additional funding maybe necessary for that grading.
Okay. All right. All right.
I remember a discussion of a mobile type of unit to be put on the campus of RCC. Am I confusing?
These are mobile units. They are, there's ones that 10-plex and ones that 7-plex. The 10-plex will offer the classroom space for the classrooms itself. It will be attached to a deck connecting the two, and then there will be another, the 7-plex includes the administration offices and some other restaurants and a cafeteria slash library area. There will be more open space, pretty much.
Dedicated just to our early college students?
It's just dedicated to early college students. It'll be set up adjacent to the existing parking lot. They will use existing parking at the community college and just access this. And then they'll also be able to leave this community college, our classrooms, to go into the community college for their technical classes.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion, second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Okay. Unanimous passes.
Thank you.
All right. Next one is 10.8, which is the added item, and we have Vince. I'm going to put you, since that was yours, that was, that was 2210, was that, is that correct?
20, I think it's 2122.
2122. Boy, I'm, but I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead and let you discuss that.
Okay.
Since you had bought, since you had put that on there, so...
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. And I don't know if you have the current version of 2122 pulled up.
That was your last week's agenda.
Well, if people want to go, if you pull up last week's agenda, that gives that history, and that has all those on there.
3/8/03, last week.
Yep. Well, since I've been on the board, it's been a little concerning that, you know, there's some language in here that just kind of really limits, to some degree, what board members can do and what they're supposed to do, and how frequently it's just kind of, by virtue of basically talking to people, you end up violating this policy. And so if you don't refer it to the superintendent, or if it's in language that was sent to us, you must refer complaints, et cetera. And so it just seemed kind of odd to me that the policy would be written in such a restrictive manner that, really, board members have trouble doing what they were elected to do, or we were elected to do. And so last week, we had a report on it, and I don't know if you noticed, that it was pointed out to me that there was some revisions that were done back in 2010. And the language that was used back in 2010 seemed to be more kind of appropriate language, in my opinion, and then maybe possibly others as well, where it kind of lays out some guidelines for board members, but doesn't necessarily restrict to the degree that the current policy does. And so I would encourage you maybe to go back and look at that 2010 policy. I've kind of taken the opportunity to type it out separate. And, you know, in talking to a couple of you, it seems like, you know, anytime you have a policy that governs yourself, maybe simpler is better. And so I would just kind of ask you, you know, what are your thoughts about reverting back to the 2010, kind of a simple version of the board policy 2122?
Did you say you do have a copy to pass out to the board?
2010 or 2001?
Well, it must be 2001, because it was revised in 2010. Is that accurate to say?
I think so. I was looking at the 2010, it looked like what we just did.
All right.
This is not, this is not verbatim, but we can go just kind of, there's only three here, and I know there's a section D in our current policy, which, that was pointed out by a couple people I talked to about serving on committees, et cetera.
I think that's a D. I think that's, and that's in the, I think, the newest version.
That's right.
There's a D where it's talking about the committees. That's our latest version.
That's right. That's correct.
The latest version has about serving on committees, and I think that would need to be put in.
That can just be added, yep.
Be added, that D version, I mean, that D section.
So, so for those listening, it says, the role of board members in handling complaints, that's the first one. It says, an individual board member who receives a complaint or inquiry concerning a school matter will refer the complainant to the appropriate school administrator, and when appropriate, advise the complainant of the procedures in place for making such complaints. The board member also may refer the complainant to the superintendent, who will determine an appropriate means of responding to the complaint. The board attorney may also be notified of the complaint in accordance with board policy 2610. And the specific language there, I think there's been some instances where, you know, people come to us and we instantly say, go to the principal. Well, that's violating our current policy. We, you know, I guess if you say, go, that's the designate, but in this one, it just clearly indicates appropriate school administrator, and then, when appropriate, advise the complainant of procedures, et cetera. So that's kind of, that's letter A. Letter B, so role of board members in meeting with citizens, pretty straightforward. Board encourages citizen participation in public schools. Board policies provide procedures for such citizen participation. Individual board members should inform any citizen group, citizen or group of citizens with whom they meet, that in such meetings, the board members act only as individuals and not for or on behalf of the board, unless the board members have been so authorized by official board action. I don't know that that's very different at all. And then, letter C, board members are encouraged to visit schools in order to inform themselves and gain a clear understanding of the daily operation of the system. Board members should, number one, notify the principal's office of the visit, of the school visit, it's kind of typo there, should follow all procedures established for visitors to schools. And I mean, that's kind of a, making sure we follow the same procedure as everybody else. And then, in matters relating to education of their own children, I think that statement is the same. We act as parents, not board members.
All right. From this, do any board members have any questions, or do they see they want to make these changes? The floor is open at this time.
The only, it seems, there's a, the policy refers to, I guess, 1742, which is responding to complaints. And that has something that is inconsistent with this policy or not, where it says, any board member or staff member receiving a complaint should verify that the complainant has been appropriately referred to him, or if not, assist the complainant by identifying appropriate personnel. Is that different than reporting it to the superintendent?
Your reading from 1742? I'm sure I have that.
Ms. Carpenter, can I ask a question? Can I ask a question? If, if, if the board is proposing changes to the policy, would, would this not be something that you would refer back to the policy committee and have them kind of make a recommendation for the group? Right. I mean, I understand there's not changes, but if we're, we're saying that we want to change the policy, then wouldn't we handle this the way we would any policy change and send that back to the policy committee?
Well, normally, when we've had a policy change, it's been a, one that has come from the, the state or from the, the actual school board association, but this is one that's come from us, that we want to do. Normally, we haven't, we haven't sent it back to them. We haven't had this, I don't remember us having it happen before.
We had, but I remember our magnet, you know...
Our magnet one, yeah.
That was not a school, a North Carolina thing, that was...
Did we send it back?
We sent it back, and they looked at it again, they came back, and...
But was it after we made our change, or before we made our change?
Well, there was a policy that came forward, and then there were comments that it needed to be changed, and so it was sent back.
But after we made our change?
We, we sent it back requesting that they consider at least the proposals that Mr. Walter wanted to have changed. And then the committee as a whole, and then reported back to us and said, yep, some of those look good, some of those we'd rather not change, and then we voted based on that. And I don't remember exactly if we accepted their recommendation or not, but I do remember that we did send it back to the...
All right. So if we make, decide we want to do this, so you're saying, us say, well, we would like to see it this way, you say, take this and send it to the policy committee, then? Is that what, what we're saying, or...
I'm not saying that we do anything, but I just say, if we do, then it seems like that's the appropriate way to go, because there might be some things that we're not thinking of just off the spur of that moment. And so it's helpful to have a second pair of eyes to look at this, to say, oh, you didn't think about how this would impact that, or I guess now there's a question about whether it's consistent with one of these other policies. So that would be the thing to ask them to look at.
Okay. And that's, and sometimes these things do tie in. And one thing, if we change one thing, sometimes we do have to change something else, and we got to make sure everything ties back in. That is one thing. But simplicity, I'm just going to say, simplicity sometimes is a lot better. I'd rather keep something simple. And one comment that Mr. Powell made is that, and I've been on this board a lot longer than a lot of you, and I can tell you that it has been the situation where, and this is before, that you, as superintendent, they used to tell us, "Okay, when a parent calls you, you're supposed to, very first thing you're supposed to say is, 'Did you,' well, no, did you tell them to ask, check with the principal first?" Now, that's what they told us to say first. Now they're saying, "Bring everything, take it straight to the superintendent and get them to do it." Now, what am I supposed to do first? You know, I got to make, but they used to say, "Tell them to go, principal first, and get them to do, do that first, get them to go through them first." So, I got to make sure what my procedure is first, to make sure I'm following what I'm supposed to do first. So, I, I've seen it changed so many times, and so I got to make sure what I'm supposed to be doing. And, and you can see this with the history that you pulled up. We have seen it change. I like simplicity myself, and I want to make sure when I'm telling the parents what to do, that I am telling them what to do correctly, and to keep it as simple as possible for a parent, and then in directing them what to do. The same thing with, when someone comes to me, and I tell them, "Okay, this is the procedure you're supposed to follow. If you want to address our board, okay, you fill out this little card when you come in, and you're going to get to address me for three minutes." I want to make sure I'm telling them how they can do this. So, we need to make sure we are following what we need to do.
That's right. Well, if they, if they issue that complaint to you, then, and you tell them to fill out the card, you're violating our current policy. You didn't refer them to the superintendent. That's why I think that it's a little restrictive in that we don't, we don't want you to violate that policy just accidentally. We'd rather just have a policy that's more of a simple, common sense version, where you refer them to where they need to be, basically.
And I would just say, it's not uncommon for a, somebody complaining to send something to all, the whole school board. And so I don't, I wasn't here when this policy was created, but one of the reasons I would suggest to send it back to the policy committee is, one, to get principal input, since they're going to be a part of that, and, secondly, is that, do we want seven board members to contact a principal and say, "Hey, I just got this complaint, I just got this complaint, I just got this complaint?" If I was guessing, don't know, I wasn't here when that was done, I would say that the reason that it was sent to the superintendent is so, Ms. Carpenter may handle, hand me a complaint as the superintendent, and I send it to the principal. And then I get the same complaint from Mr. Walter, so I say, "Okay, well, I know they've gotten that." Instead, seven board members may be sending the same complaint to principals. So now, if we have three or four complaints, we have 21 different things that have been sent to a principal. In my mind, that's more things that they have to deal with, instead of, there's one person that that's going through, so that way, if you're turning it all over to me, it's now my responsibility to make sure it got to the school. I would, I would imagine that's why that was put in, don't know that, wasn't here, but it, again, is why I think it probably is a good thing for principal representation to be able to say, "Hey, how do we want to handle these, and what do we like about the policy," and then come back and recommend that to you guys.
Two, two concerns with that. Having principals decide for us is, is great on a lot of things, but at some, at some point, the policy is the school board policy, and we kind of decide how we would like to govern ourselves, basically. And, you know, that's, that's a little bit of a concern. And then the second point is, it's not what this says at all. It doesn't say, send, it doesn't say, "Board member, contact principal." It is, that's not been the policy, has it, Dr. L, I mean, it says, "Refer the complainant to the appropriate school administrator." So, you know, everybody would say to that one complainant, "Go talk to your principal," and then the one person goes and talks to the principal. Is that, I'm, I'm just reading it, I think I'm reading it correctly. We would not go and talk to the principal ourselves. That's completely inappropriate, completely inappropriate, for them to get, you know, seven emails and whatever. I think, but following this policy, we just tell the person to, "Have you checked with your principal?"
Chat, and that's what we do. We'd say, "Did you chat, did you check with your principal?"
Or even, or even teacher, or even assistant principal, or athletic director even, you know, could be appropriate, that's a school level administrator.
Because they're supposed to go to their, what we were always, they were supposed to check with the principal before they go to the superintendent, they were supposed to.
Can we ask Mr. Enriquez to advise us at this point, where do we stand on this, and what, what are your recommendations to go forward, please?
Well, I mean, I do think the board can decide what language it wants to use. I do think some input from policy committee may be helpful, and that would be what we typically do, although you're not required to have every policy go through policy committee. You don't have to, to do it that way. I really think it's a, you know, board working with superintendent, the only thing I think I could add from historic perspective is, I think in 2010, when they made some change, there was some uncertainty about who the appropriate school administrator was, so you've got a section 504 question, who does, who do I send that question to, or special education, do I send it to the principal, or the director of the E C program, or superintendent? So the thought was, kind of have an easier funnel, if you just tell the superintendent, we'll get it that right place. But I, I hear what Mr. Powell's saying about, "Hey, we should also be able to say, hey, you should talk to your principal," that may be an appropriate answer. So I think, but I think that, that question about who the appropriate administrator is, it may be obvious if it's a, if it's apparent with an issue, but obviously, we're a big enough system, sometimes figuring out who that appropriate administrator is can be challenging, and so the thought was, if you send it to the superintendent, they'll get it to the right channel, because you may not know. But that's, I think, again, I think the board can, board can choose what language you want there. The only other, there was some additional language in, at least what I think is the 2001, under section B, meeting with citizens, talking about disclosures, and you may want to keep some of that. Unless it was removed intentionally, I think some of that language may be worth retaining. That's not, not in the draft that, that you've got here, that just makes it clear. The language that I don't see in this is that individual board members should attempt to avoid situations where, and I'm, I'm reading from the redlined version I presented on last week, "Avoid situations in which citizens could interpret the board member's presence as being officially representative of the board." That was added because we had some folks say, "I'll add a board member to my committee, and now I don't have to communicate with the board," it's kind of an endorsement issue. And it says, "Individual board members should refrain from meeting with groups of school employees to discuss matters related to employment or conditions of work without specific authorization by official board action." Again, the idea was, you don't want, you know, a board member going and kind of holding court with a bunch of employees unless the board's asked them to do that, and kind of create the idea that this is a, a board meeting. I, I would, I think that language may be worth retaining if you're going to switch the referral thing, which, again, I think you can decide, do you want it to go to an appropriate official, leave each board member to decide who that is? Do you want to leave the language? Do you want to send it to committee? Those are, those are, I think, your choices. You could do those.
I think it's safe to say that the principal of the school is a good administrative choice to refer everything back to, and maybe that's not appropriate in some isolated cases, but to, to insinuate that the seven of us don't know where to send a complainant from a school level, so we're going to, now all of a sudden, if we get a comment in passing, we have to send it to the superintendent, or, I'm sorry, we must send it to the superintendent. That seems a little restrictive for somebody just talking in, in passing and say, "Hey, I got a concern with IEP," well, go see the superintendent. Okay? That's not appropriate. I'm, I just, I don't think that that's an appropriate response, and I don't know that any one of us necessarily does that. Maybe, maybe we do, maybe everybody that hears the comment sends it to the superintendent, but I, I have a feeling that's not necessarily what's, what's going on. But I would think maybe, but the intent is that the policy matches the practice, and I have a feeling that the practice is, if somebody comes to Mr. Phillips because he knows the six to 10-year plan in detail, and they're complaining because, you know, Cox Mill is not on the six to 10-year plan, and he goes, "Oh, wait a minute, it's on the five-year," but nope, can't do that. You have to refer it to the superintendent. They've registered a complaint, and that's not appropriate, I think. I mean, he should be free to answer that question, or to refer them to a document that might be appropriate, that kind of thing.
I still would just like to make sure, reiterate, because I think it's important here, that, you know, one is, I think that protects the integrity of the board, and, secondly, I can only speak when I was a principal, and I know there's some other principals in the room, that to, to get a call, or an email, or, or something from a board member raises your stress level quite a bit as a principal, because you're not in contact with them. And so I believe that that's something that is, could be very stressful for them, depending on the topic. You get one board member today, another board member tomorrow, it tends to be inconsistent. And so I know Mr. Powell said he didn't necessarily think that we should run that by the principals. The principals don't make the decision, obviously the board makes the decision, but I would like to, if we were going to change that, to say, "Hey, we, we had board member representation on the policy committee," that there would also be principal representation there to say, "What do you think about that? Would you, would you prefer that a complaint went, you know, a different way, or how that would be?" Because, you know, there, you can, there can be quite a lot of them, and can get them from different board members. So, obviously, you guys can make whatever decision you want, you're the school board, but normally with these, we want to run those by the, the representation that's at, in the policy committee to say, "Wow, does, what does the principal feel? How does the, everybody that's there, the director feel, or the things that would go a different way for that?" So, I would just say, I would, I would like to recommend to do that, because I think it, it will be helpful in helping you guys make a decision on what's best for them, but at the end of the day, obviously, you make, you guys make that call.
Let me, I, I mean, I hear what you're saying, but it says, "The complainant," not the school board member going to a principal, but the individual.
Parent, you go to the principal, not us. I mean, I know you don't want the school board calling first, but it doesn't say, "The complainant."
Well, I think if there's confusion, that's another reason to send it back to the policy committee. So if there's, if we're not sure about how that would go, then let's say, "Wow, I kind of read this," and you would have attorney representation there to say, "Let's word this differently, so it will be simple, like Ms. Carpenter said."
Dr. L, with all due respect, I don't see it written in any of the, the proposal where the board member goes to the school. That's not appropriate, but, and I don't see it in here. What are you referring to?
Board members should notify the principal's office of the visit to the school, there's one place that that's in, and I thought that was one thing that, that we were talking about earlier. So that would be something that you would communicate there, right? And, and again, I think there's some, at least discussion, confusion, however that would be, of what is appropriate. So if it's what a board member does, then the policy committee can make a recommendation of how to make that clearer. If it's what a community person does through a board member, I think that's what some of this is too, is that there's a complainant, but we're actually complaining to a board member, and the board member's saying, "We'll go back and talk to the principal," so it kind of gets filtered through a lot of people. And if there's confusion with that, I would just think all the stakeholders would want to weigh in on it.
Mr. Phillips?
While you've been talking, I, I went and looked at this policy 1742, which is referred to as a reference in the, the current policy, and there, there does seem to be an inconsistency, because in that one, it says, "Complaint should be received and addressed at the level closest to which the complaint originated. For example, complaint regarding classroom should first be heard by the teacher. A complaint regarding the school should be first addressed by the principal. Therefore, the proper channel of complaints will be as follows: teacher, principal, school relations coordinator, superintendent, board of education. Any board member or staff member receiving a complaint should verify the complaint has been appropriately referred to him or her, and if not, assist the complainant by identifying appropriate personnel." Now, I mean, we, you know, we could say, "All right, I know the appropriate personnel is the superintendent," based on the other policy, but here it's kind of indicating, no, you should actually say, "Well, actually, that's a classroom issue, have you, you know, go back to your teacher." Or, or you, it is, "You've talked to the teacher? Okay, well, next you got to go to the principal." So, it, it does seem like there is, so maybe we just ask the, the policy committee to look at those two policies, and then come back with us with proposed improvements to simplify and clarify?
In the context of this policy, of board, board members interacting with the public, our fiduciary responsibility, I believe, maybe that's not quite the right word, but our legal responsibility, or relationship is with the superintendent. So I, there is room for clarification from these discussions, but if I hear of X, I feel like I should talk to the superintendent or his immediate designee, Dr. Kirk. That is, that's my go-to approach for issues. It can be somebody's shoestrings not tied correctly. That's not the point, whether it's a high or low level, or significant issue, or relatively easily resolved issue. But if I deal somehow as the first point of contact with a community complaint or a parent concern, my relationship is with the superintendent, and that's, from my understanding, the best way to handle that, regardless whether it is significant or relatively easy to handle. That might be a burden on the superintendent, but that's the relationship this role as a board member has, and no further, is my understanding. So, we could certainly send this to the, is that your recommendation, to go to the policy committee for the, for, for clarifications? But it, it, it needs to be couched in terms of what a board member is supposed to do when they are privy to some issue, some concern. And my understanding is to deal with the superintendent from, from this role, from this seat, from what I do as an elected member of the board.
I guess I would say, after hearing the policy references that Dr. Phillips made, you know, I think some policy committee to potentially try to, you know, harmonize those two makes some sense. And I, I think you've done a good job, Dr. Harrison. There's some tension between, you, you want to, well, you want to make sure it's going to the right level, and so that, the right level may be to say, "Have you talked to the principal?" So you may want some ability to do that, and I think it's worth rethinking that level. On the other hand, the one that's accountable to the board is the superintendent. So, it may be referred to the principal, but you're not going to directly take any action with what the principal does. So I think there may be a way to make it so that those make sense, and you can give people the, steer them in the right direction without trying to suggest that you're going to be directly involved with, or communicating with principals in that. So you could tell the parent, "You need to talk to your principal," but in terms of accountability, you need to say, "If you want follow-up, you need to let me talk to the superintendent about it," because that's the person you would follow up with, to say, "Hey, parent complained to me a month ago, what happened?" You would be following up with the superintendent, I think, not, not going to that principal and saying, "Hey, did Ms. Parent talk to you, and what happened?" So I think there, there may be a way to revise the policy, to give you more freedom to make an referral somewhere that is the appropriate school official, but still have the accountability with the superintendent. So it's probably worth having the policy committee, you know, revise it, and it may be worth making some of these changes, and talk to the principal, make sure we're, you know, comfortable with that.
It seems like the issue here is not the complaint itself, it's the recipient of the complaint, being a board member. And so my initial feel for this would be that I would not deal with a principal, or assistant principal, any more than I would deal with any other staff member, or a teacher over an issue, because just the call from me to, to, or even, Mr. Harrison told me to talk to you, to a teacher, would, would be terribly disruptive, I would think. I would think my role would be to direct the complaint from the top down, being the superintendent's role, and let it, let it filter from that, and, and let the normal administrative structure filter that complaint, or that issue down through. So even if that seems inefficient, that's my job in relationship to his job, is kind of where I'm coming from. But the, the policy committee, if it's appropriate, certainly could have that discussion.
All right. Well, let's, we, we could talk about this probably all night, but one of the things, this has been put to us, and what I'm wondering is, since you have taken the time, I'm wondering, we haven't had a motion to do anything, so we need to get a motion on the floor, or do either to send this on to the policy committee for them to review what we have in hand, or something needs to be done to, to dispose of what we've got, up or down, or something at this point.
I make a motion that we modify policy 2122 with A, B, and C that you have before you, and in addition to that, send it to the policy committee to make sure that policy 2122 is correlated to policy 1742-5060, and any recommendations that need to be changed so that it does correlate with 1742/5060.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Now we have discussion.
Isn't the proper process to have a first read, and then come back and have a second read before the policy goes into place? Or changes made, is that?
Well, you do, you're, you do have to have two reads before.
I'd like to see that followed. Well, I'd at least like to see that followed, but I do agree, I think it needs to be a simpler policy.
All right, so what would this do? Would it go back on to the agenda for this, but I really think it needs to go to policy committee before we have a second read.
Dr. Reimer, can we ask, to me, it's appropriate for it to go to the policy committee, for the policy committee's recommendations to rise up to us, as opposed to shaping and molding what the policy committee ought to do, and, and then duplicating that kind of effort. I'm perfectly willing, with no preconceived notions for this, and all associated policies, to go to the policy committee, and that, and that committee make its recommendations. So I cannot support the, the motion as it is made, per se. But with no strings attached, and no preconceived notions, for the policy to go back to the committee, it is, is, to me, seems perfectly appropriate. Can, can you help me understand which might be the better or wiser approach?
What, what I will say, I don't know if I can help you or not, but what I will say is that since I've been in this role, all of our policies have gone, even when the board has brought those questions up, have gone back to policy committee for review, and then a recommendation. So from policy and practice, and what we've done in the past, I would suggest that, only to give everyone around the table a chance, including our principals and teachers and everybody at the committee, to, to voice their opinions. Again, that's, that's the practice we've used since I've been in this role. I think Mr. Enriquez can inform the board better, but, you know, from, from my perspective, and, and in charge of policy, I would like to see that. Yes, sir?
I'd not be able, Derek, I'll just say this about the way the policy committee works that I've experienced. The policy committee, I'm choosing my words well here, is an independent body, and it makes objective recommendations brought up to the board.
That's incorrect.
My perception is that the policy committee works in a very efficient way, and having been on the policy committee, it's my perception that it is efficient and fair in its kind of adjudication of revisions to policy. That's what I prefer to keep going forward with.
All right, now, what we have asked, and I need to ask my attorney if this is what we can do, is that, and it was, can we, we had a motion in the second, and to have this go to policy committee before the second read.
That's how I understood.
Okay, 'cause that's what we said.
I understood this was a motion to pass on first read and refer to policy committee. Is that your motion?
No, no. It was to do, it was, it was both, it was both. And might I add that this, this, this policy was discussed at length, December 16th, in closed session. I mean, it was, it was discussed at length, and granted, I wasn't there.
But no changes were made. The last time the policy was changed was in February of last year, and you voted for it.
That, this, so, so the discussion has been had, I wasn't, like I said, I wasn't participating in it, but, so, yes, the, it's a both motion.
Oh, okay, all right. I just wanna make sure, 'cause it's, it will go back to policy committee.
Can I, can I just say, Mr. Enriquez maybe can clarify, Mr. Powell wasn't present for that meeting, and I don't think we discussed the policy. What we discussed was a, an effective way to communicate, as we said, with emails, or however you get complaints, and I believe Mr. Enriquez pointed to this policy as affirmation of, hey, we have a policy that says this is what you should do. So there really has not been a discussion of the policy, and wasn't there that night, as I said, Mr. Powell wasn't there. So again, it normally would be when we go down that, you have everybody sitting at the table for input.
And this is what concerns me, though. If we keep the policy the way it is, and, and then we do what we just said we wanted to do, we would be breaking the policy, though. If I go and say, all right, go to, I get a complaint, and I say, go to the, go to the, go to the print, and the, a parent calls me up on the phone and says, da-da-da-da-da, and, and it's something that needs to be handled, you know, the principal need to handle it. And it's simple enough to say, did you check with your principal, which is the level they need to be, just saying, you go check with, you know, you need to handle it, the print. I've broken 2122 as it's written right now, because the way it's written right now, it says, take that complaint to the superintendent, where it's very simple for me just to say, have you checked with your principal? Not me checking with the prin, not me going and calling that principal. But I have broken 2122.
So I, I think, I think that may be, I think that, I guess that, again, the issue, that's one change, and you may be able to, you may wanna decide tonight on, you should be able to contact appropriate school administrator.
And that's a real simple phrase.
But there are several other change, you've taken out, you know, part of the language on dealing with citizens and citizens' meetings, and you've changed the provision on visits to school, and this policy, if you vote on it, doesn't have anything about committees. I don't know if you, I think, but, so, I guess it's that, well, you'd have to add it in. I guess that's just where, if you vote on something here without a committee, it may be, you've, you've got some pieces that may not have been discussed. You may feel, as a board, we wanna send them to the appropriate school administrator, put it back to the way it was in 2010. I, I think that's, you know, I mean, the board can decide that. I don't have a, I don't have a concern about that change, I just, you know, wonder about making these other changes on, without a policy committee review. I do agree with what Lynn Reimer said, which is, in my experience, we've generally had the policy committee weigh in on it, so that may be a cleaner way to do it. You can send it with, if you wanted, for example, you could send it to the policy committee to review, with direction from the board that you want it to be the appropriate school administrator. If the board has reached a consensus on who to contact, that's fine. I think there's other language here, though, that I just have some concern about adopting here as a first read. Again, it's up to the board, you can, you can pass the, that motion, but it seems to me a committee might offer a way to flesh it out and bring it, and again, you can, as you've done in the past, you can either adopt that committee version, or change it, if you wanna change it.
Okay, we've got the motion.
Is anything in this draft that, that was passed out violate general statutes?
I don't believe so. I don't, this is really, no, no. I think that most of this is really a matter of what, how the board chooses to regulate itself, so I, I don't have a concern from a legal standpoint about this. It's more, you know, it's, it's really a practical concern, not a legal concern.
I think Mr. Harrison clearly indicated that governing ourselves is, is always an option. I mean, I, you know, we as individuals can always refer something to the superintendent. I mean, that's always an option. But according to another policy we have, and what I would venture to say is common sense, if somebody comes to you and says the trash can at Pitt School is not emptied, and we're gonna send that to the superintendent, then I think you're defying common sense. But you, you're, that's, like, we're, we're free to do that as individuals. I think that to violate a board policy because we don't refer that complainant to the superintendent, I think is a little, I just wanna try to avoid it. Like Carolyn said, we don't wanna violate policy without, you know, knowing it, essentially.
Okay, you had a comment, Mr.
Yeah, I, I don't like the precedent of, of changing policy in, in a meeting when the policy wasn't even on the public agenda beforehand, and without consulting with members of the policy committee, who may have insights that none of us on the board have. I, for one, would like to have the opportunity to contact board members who were on the board in 2010, and ask them why they moved away from this policy, before I vote to move away from this policy. So I'm gonna vote against it. What I would, would support, though, is a motion to send this text back to the policy committee and say, look, we're confused by what's in 2122 now, and what's in 1742. We need to synchronize and simplify, and we think that the section here in A, that was from the version before 2010, is, is perhaps an easier policy to follow, and may be more consistent with 1742. That, that I would support, but I won't support changing a policy on the fly with no public notice that we were even going to discuss this.
Okay.
And if I may, I, I will vote against the motion as it is made and seconded, but I would be happy to vote for a cleaner statement, that the policy be returned to the policy committee for policy recommendations.
All right.
Yeah, I've got one quick thing. You know, to me, it doesn't matter either way. I mean, our job's real simple, either to the superintendent, or have the person, you're just gonna have one conversation with the, the person that complains. But the bottom line is, what we gotta, I think the big issue is here is when to get out of it, is when to turn it loose, and when you're not satisfied with an answer, you just can't keep going down that road. You can't keep getting in the weeds. There's a time where, you know, if we tell that individual to, you gotta talk, you know, contact the superintendent, superintendent, or you contact the principal, to me, at that point, it's over with us. And I think that's probably the more of an issue, it's just my opinion.
Let that horse go. Well, let's call this question. This horse has been beat long enough. What do you think? We got a question on the floor, and it's been motioned and seconded, let's call that question. How about that? I'm gonna call it. All right, all those in favor, let's restate the question.
Wait a minute, can I ask a question?
All right, one more, one more question.
What Vince did, what he recommended, a motion, and I seconded.
Yeah, you did.
But can I, I can not second.
Because I would prefer, I wanna withdraw my second, because I want Dr. Phillips, his, I guess it's recommendation, or does it go back to the committee?
I believe you, yeah.
I can do that.
Or, or you can ask if we can make a friendly amendment to Vince's.
Well, then it's another, then it's, then he, you gotta get a second to that amendment. He withdrew it. Oh, you're gonna complicate my life.
Here's the question, I mean, right, you can definitely vote against it, even though you seconded it, and that, that's cleaner procedurally, I'd have to look up, the withdrawal of the second is a little more complicated, but.
All right, you're not withdrawing it, then. Don't make it, don't make it tough on me. All right, you got a motion second. Let's restate the question, though. Restate your question, so make sure Eileen's got it right.
The motion was to, the motion was to replace A, B, and C, so D stays in place, with the draft in front of you, while referring 22, 2122 to the policy committee, to help it match whatever the other one was.
1742.
1742, that's right. That way, in the interim between policy committee meetings, or not meetings, we have some version that is relatively consistent, and since they're not violating any, any general statutes, we're still bound by those, obviously, that's what, that's why the motion was made as it was.
All right, all right, now we have, the question called, now, we have, I know you're, go ahead, you want one more comment? I'll let you make one more.
Yeah, my point is, this is our policy, so it's a board, board's decision on this, but I do think that it does helpful to get the committee's thoughts on it, but ultimately it is our, our decision on, on how this policy should read, how we govern ourselves. But again, I support Dr. Phillips's idea that you don't just put something, pull it on an agenda and try to vote on it today. I think that's, we need, we need to at least have time to review it, and let the public see it as well.
All right, we've all had our two cents. Were all those in favor of the motion? If you would, let's make sure we get this, all of those in favors say aye. Let's raise our hands, so we get the vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All of those opposed? One, two, all right, the motion fails. So this does not, the, the motion fails, so it does not go anywhere at this point. All right, so it stays.
Madam Chairman, may I make a motion, please, for policy 2122 to be reviewed by the policy committee, period?
Friendly amendment to also, uh, review 1742 and.
2122 and 1742.
Okay, so just send both of those back?
And to review Mr. Powell's edits, draft.
So put them all together to send in? All right, so this is a motion, and that was a motion by Mr. Harrison, seconded by Mr. Walters, and that's to send, send this 22, to send that 2122 back to policy committee, along with, what was the other?
Powell's proposal.
Mr. Powell's proposal, also descend 17?
42.
1742, for policy committee to look at. Okay, any further discussion? If not, all those say aye? Aye?
That was a aye.
Aye, aye, got, got, okay, got a six, a unanimous on that one. All right, all opposed? All right, that was unanimous. Okay, now.
Before we go into closed session, is it correct, did I hear you right, that we're gonna be talking about the possibility of an attorney RFQ next month?
We're gonna, we're gonna possibly be, we're gonna be talking about, yeah, possibly, next month. Okay, all right, all right, we are 11.1, calling for a motion to convene in closed session, this, the, we are convening in closed session pursuant to general statute 143-318.113A3 to convene with attorney employed or retained by a public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege, women, a privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privilege is hereby acknowledged and pursuant to general statute 143-318.11A5 to establish or instruct the public body's staff or negotiate agent consenting the position to be taken on or behalf of the public body in negotiating the price and other materials, terms, or of a contract, or proposing the contract for the acquiring of real estate by purchase, option, exchange, or lease. Do I have a vote?
And the closed session is held in the conference room, superintendent?
Yes, mhm.
Make the motion as you stated it.
A motion by Mr. Walters, seconded by Mr. Fur. All those in favor say aye? Aye, all opposed? Okay, thank you, and good evening.